Okay, yes, we do have a quorum and we will start with the pledge of allegiance, which I just said to myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to turn things over to the superintendent for the celebration of excellence.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm pleased to announce this year that we had eight students from BCS who participated in the Eastern Region Middle School Music Festival on March 4th and 5th at Enfield High School. In order to be accepted to the festival, students had to record and submit a virtual audition back in December. The auditions are highly competitive and it is an honor to be selected for one of these elite ensembles. During the festival, students rehearse for several hours on Friday evening and get on Saturday morning and perform a concert on Saturday afternoon featuring several pieces of challenging and exciting repertoire. Please join Bolton Public Schools in celebrating the following students for their accomplishment. Nicole DiNunzio and Allison Hartzog, who both played flute in the Eastern Region Concert Band, and Natalie Ansaldi, Moranatha Cram, Ayana Gamble, Adriana Miley, Grace Osborne, and Kelsey Perskins, who sang in the Eastern Region Treble Choir. Our students did an outstanding job performing their music and representing our town at the festival. I want to congratulate all of them. Give them a round of applause. Well done, well done. At Bolton High School, Silas Gourley was accepted into the Eastern Region High School Jazz Ensemble and Kaylee Sheehan was also accepted into the Eastern Region High School Treble Choir. Both students prepared, recorded, and submitted video recordings of solo works. They received feedback and scores from trained adjudicators. These scores earned them acceptance into the listed ensembles. The festival was scheduled to happen January 7th and 8th at Eastern Connecticut State University. Unfortunately, the festival timing coincided with the Omicron variant surge and was postponed but then later canceled when an alternate date and location could not be found. However, I want to congratulate Silas and Kaylee for both being accepted into Eastern Regionals and all the work they did to get there. So congratulations to them and to all of our students tonight. Well done. Our students are on here, so I'm wondering if any of them would like to share anything or say anything about their experience? And you don't have to, but feel free to do so. Okay, I think I gave appropriate wait time, so I'm going to move on. It is also School Board Recognition Month, so I would like to share that our school board members are vital to public education and to our system here in Bolton. March is School Board Recognition Month and it allows us to show our appreciation to all of these dedicated individuals for all of the time and effort that they devote as volunteers in support of education in the Bolton Public Schools. They are dedicated individuals who demonstrate an unwavering commitment to our district and the success of our schools and our students. On behalf of the students, staff, of the Bolton Public Schools, and the Bolton community, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Chair O'Neill, Vice Chair Sue Pike, Secretary Ben Davies, Board Members Chris Davie, Scott Rich, Rhea Klein, and Diana Pagano. We are very, very fortunate to have such thoughtful and dedicated community members serving and supporting our outstanding school system. I want to thank you all for all that you do. And that concludes our celebration of excellence this evening.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to comments from the audience. Are there any audience members who would like to make a comment this evening? I guess that's a no. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
No, we do not.
All right, on to routine business.
Oh, wait a minute. Do we have the?
It's on, it's on the agenda under new business.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to confirm, you're talking about the diversity survey, correct, Rhea?
I didn't, I didn't see it.
Under new business, number four?
Yep.
Okay.
It's there. Don't worry, we'll get to it.
Okay.
As far as routine business goes, looking for a motion to accept minutes of the February 10th, 2022 Board of Education Business Meeting.
So moved. This is Chris.
I'll second, Rhea.
Thank you, Chris and Rhea. Are there any edits or any comments made about this, these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone who is opposed or abstaining? That motion passes. Seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the February 10th, 2022 Budget Workshop.
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you, Chris and Scott. Are there any edits or comments on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone who is opposed or abstaining? That motion passes. Now I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes of the February 24th, 2022 Budget Workshop.
So moved.
I'll second.
Are there any edits or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All right. And lastly, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the February 24th, 2022 Special Meeting.
So moved.
I'll second, Rhea.
Okay.
Rhea and Chris, do we have any edits or comments about these minutes?
One correction of a name spelling. The eighth public speaker should be Deborah Stevens with an S at the end.
Good eye, Chris. And I just want to compliment that these minutes were very, very detailed. Actually, all of them were very detailed and did a very accurate job of portraying the meeting, so. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 There's anyone else opposed or abstaining? So that motion also passes. That will bring us to Board of Education Committee Reports. First one we have is Kappa.
So the Kappa Committee met on March 3rd to review both the town capital improvement plan and the Board of Education's plan with the hope of arriving at a consensus and sending it to the Board of Selectment for approval. This was accomplished, the total list for both groups adds up to about $463,000, which is in the range of the one mil that is required by the charter. The final list that's being sent to the Board of Selectment for their approval includes two projects for the school systems. The BCS door replacement is getting the remaining funds necessary to complete, to do that project. The money had been set aside the previous year and the balance was approved for this year. And there was another $140,000 assigned to a garage at the Bolton High School Storage Building for the vans and athletic equipment. The original proposal had been for a six bay, but it was determined that a four bay would be sufficient for it and they the money was, we had a bid price for the six bay garage, so we anticipate what the amount of money would cost to do a four bay. That 140 is, covers part of it. The, the hope is to be able to use low SIP funds, which is a state grant for municipalities to pay the balance of that. If that doesn't work, then this money will be the, the remaining balance will be added to next year's list, so that the purchase can be made. Anything else, Andrew?
No, I think that, that, that covers it, right? Yeah. Yeah, I think we did all right with Kappa. Thank you. Onto curriculum. Chris, you want to handle that?
Sure. Curriculum met on March 1st and we discussed the two new courses that will be presented during new business. One on writing composition style and technique and the other an AP English Language course.
Thank you very much. Onto finance.
Okay. We met yesterday and the we're 55% expended compared to 56% last year. Special education at this point is, has been stable, but as we know, it's an ever-changing landscape. And Superintendent Heck will talk about the transfers and the Board of Ed Finance Fiscal Year 23 Budget.
Thank you. So the first one is just to cover the balance needed to replace the 25 computer lab desktops. And it's out of health insurance into the online subscription and online subscriptions, which was a reclass. We needed to purchase additional athletic supplies. We needed to pay for BCS music performance masks. That was before the mask mandate went away. And we still have students choosing to use them, which is great. Should they want them, we have them. We had to purchase some additional social studies instructional supplies. We had to reclass to cover the increased costs for the chemical waste management piece at Bolton High School. A reclassification to cover operations costs to increase repair for the BHS garage and the BHS server room HVAC units. A reclass to cover the increased cost of the new postage machine rental for Bolton Center School as well as the BOE postage machine rental. And then in terms of education, currently we're still projecting to fully expend regular education instruction. Scroll down a little bit more, Jess, if you would, for me. Great, thank you. Same for special education. Again, I want to remind the Board that we do not anticipate receiving an excess cost grant this year because we haven't met the criteria for that. We are looking for to be fully expended under administration support and central services at this point in time. It's just too early to actualize savings there yet. And then we are actualizing some savings, more savings and personnel benefits of 37,000. And as Rhea shared, you can see our expenditure there, so we're looking currently up at a projected budget balance of $200,000. I want to remind the Board that the reason for this is because we still continue to have unfilled positions in the Bolton Public Schools. And you will hear about more this evening when we get to resignation. So if we could scroll down a bit further, please. A little bit more. Yep, perfect. Nope, up, up a little bit. There we go. So we are asking this evening for two pieces, a transfer request of 35,000, which I'm going to speak about in a minute, and a commitment on the Board's part, which would be a separate motion to give back $140,000 towards next year's fiscal 23 budget. Just as a reminder, the Board of Education presents its budget to the Board of Finance next Thursday night. And at that time, ideally, it would be good if we can tell them that we are able to offer this up at that time. So if we could scroll down a little bit further, please, to the next page. Thank you. So you may recall that in our Kappa request, we had to, we had on there replacing the blinds at both Bolton Center School and Bolton High School. It was shared with Scott, Andrew, and I at the Kappa Committee that, that those purchases do not meet the Kappa criteria set forth in the charter. And the Board will need to come up with those funds through their own budget to replace it. And it's a grand total of about $100,000. Cassel and I had a lot of discussion about this. And I, I think the prudent thing to do at this point is to transfer $25,000 into John's budget to go towards one quarter of the repair of those blinds, seeking out what are the worst ones in both schools and replacing those at this point. And maybe we can try to, in the coming years, find additional monies to do the rest of it, sort of do it in a multi-step process like we do for a lot of things in Kappa. And an additional $10,000 to go into John's budget, because it just came to our attention that we have some issues with the bleachers at the high school and we have some elements of the bleachers that need to be fixed to keep it safe. So I told John to get moving on getting the vendor out here to take care of that, and that's about $6,200. And I'd like to leave a little more room in there, if in the end he has enough money to refinish the floor prior to the end of the school year at Bolton High School on the gym floor, because it's not looking too good right now. And hopefully, maybe we can possibly try to get that done either over April vacation or towards the end of the year when the gym is no longer being used. Questions for me? Okay, so I guess hearing none, we'll first need a motion on the February transfers, please.
Yes, we're looking for a motion to approve the February transfers.
So moved, Rhea.
Thank you, Rhea.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any questions or comments about the February transfers that we went over? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, that motion passes. The second motion we are looking for is a transfer of $35,000. I think it was out of benefits and into
Operations and Maintenance.
So moved.
I'll second that, Chris.
Rhea and Chris, do we have any questions about this transfer? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.[1163.40][1164.11][S01, 1164.54][S03] Aye. Is there anyone who is opposed or abstaining? Okay, that motion passes. And the third motion, we are looking for a motion to commit $140,000 back to the Town and Board of Finance next week at our budget presentation to the Board of Finance.
So I would just add to that from FY22 budget savings towards FY23 budget. Please.
So moved. This is Chris.
Second, Rhea.
Thank you, Chris and Rhea. Do we have any questions or comments about this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I think that was everybody. Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, that motion passes and I'm sure they'll be very glad to hear it. Moving on now to BHS Student Representative Reports.
Thank you. Em, you're on.
Hi. Seniors are still applying and receiving acceptances and also committing to college. And we're also working on capstone presentations and our senior night will be taking place on April 21st where we present those. The National Honors Society is hosting a blood drive on March 21st. And we also just had the phone-a-thon for the Bolton Scholarship Fund on February 27th and 28th. That went very well. Our next Donut Club meeting is on March 18th and the Student Council is having a meeting tonight. The yearbook is getting the yearbook ready, but they think it will be done by April break. And the drama department is returning to their live theater this weekend with their production of Chicago, which is actually where Michael and Mr. Muselli is. Friday night, the tickets are already sold out and, but they are still available, available for Friday, I mean Saturday, full shows. In sports news, the boys' basketball finished their season with a record of five and 14 and they're ranked 12th in the NCC. And the girls are play, just played their quarterfinal game on Tuesday and they won 42 to 27 against Summers. And they're advancing to the semifinals in New Britain on Monday against Thomaston. They finished the regular season with a record of 15 and 5 and they came in fourth in the NCC tournament. Now we're the fifth seed within, and there's four more teams left. Track is still having preseason conditioning right now, but in their indoor season, the girls came in third in NCC and the boys came in fourth. And spring sports will start at the end of the month. And that's it.
Thanks, Em. Feel free to stay or go do what you need to do, Em.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to community meeting reports. Do we have anyone who attended any community meetings?
I can report on the Bolton Scholarship Fund. I guess on behalf of the Bolton Scholarship Fund, I want to thank Mr. Muselli, Mr. Jen Santi, and everyone else who helped assist with the phone-a-thon. And a huge thank you to all of the National Honors Society students who made calls to homes throughout Bolton. By all accounts, it went very well. Applications are now available on the ESF website for our 2022 scholarships. The application deadline is May 3rd at 11:59 PM. So get your applications in before then. The same deadline for both high school students and students currently in college or graduate school. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else? Okay, now I'd like to turn things over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools Report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. GR to start with an update from Bolton Center School.
Good evening, everyone. A first bullet there, mask updates or brief update about mask wearing since February 28th when masks became optional. Right from day one, everyone in the school community, students, staff, families have all been super respectful of everybody's mask choice. The places where masks need to be worn, the preschool program, the health room, and for those individuals who tested positive who came back on days six through 10, if they're symptom-free, has been seamless. And honestly, it's the respect has been shown throughout the entire transition because of the positive environment and culture that exists at the Center School and in Bolton Public Schools. So it's been, it's been amazing, the transition. PTA donation, I'd like to publicly thank the BCS PTA for their generous donation of over $10,000 in equipment to support the STEAM and Technology Education Program at BCS. The donation means the purchase of Little Bit Steam Coating Class Packs, Vex IQ Competition Kits, and Vex Go Classroom Bundles. A little bit already came in and the students and staff have been using them in the classrooms and have loved every minute. Again, a big thank you to the PTA for continuing to support the staff and students at BCS and it's literally year after year. So that's a huge, a huge thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Safran to talk about Read Across America.
Thank you. All right, I'll take a moment to look, enjoy those pictures, some of our pictures. So throughout the month of March, we celebrate Read Across America and our nation of diverse readers. We began with our school-wide spirit days that ran from Tuesday, March 1st through Friday, March 4th. We enjoyed Hat Day, Dress Like Your Favorite Story Character Day, and on Friday, students were encouraged to cuddle up with their favorite book while wearing jammies to school. Some rooms invited guest readers from within the building, while some classes are having mystery readers zoom in all throughout the month. It's just a tiny bit of the fun that we were able to capture there. Beyond that, along with the spirit days, we joined the National Education Association in celebrating our nation of diverse readers with daily school-wide book talks during the morning announcements. Each week, we explore different themes and recommended books to expand our minds and our imaginations. This year, our themes are following your passions or interests, award-winning books, empathy and kindness, family stories, and Women's History Month. And it's become a fun part of our morning announcements. I think that concludes the BCS report.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Mr. Giard or Mrs. Safran? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Johnson, who's going to give the report for the high school because Mr. Muselli's at play breakfast.
Good evening, everyone. New this year, all of our juniors will be taking the SAT online on March 23rd. We have the capacity for all students to test simultaneously with desktops and Chromebooks and students are even given choice as to which device they wish to use. Mr. Jen Santi and Mrs. Goulet, our grade 10 English teacher, met with students over the past few weeks stressing the importance of the SAT and answering questions regarding the test. We have used our connections time for students to practice as well as prepare paperwork, which some of us will remember the old bubble sheets. Like Mr. Giard said, things are going very well for us at the high school with students and staff respecting each individual's choice regarding mask wearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Ms. Johnson? Before we leave Bolton High School, I just want to let you all know that we play again, a reminder against Thomaston Monday night, 7:45, New Britain High School. And I will send you a link if you wish to get tickets, so you can come and join us and support our girls on Monday night in the semifinals. And I'll leave it there. Thanks. And now I'd like to turn it over to Director of HR and Student Support Services, Beth Cold Snyder.
Good evening. Thank you for asking us to present to you tonight. We will be talking about how Bolton Public Schools supports the social and emotional needs of our students. And I think to Mr. Giard's point, that when he was talking about the masks coming off, that just speaks to what our, our culture and our climate in our school district is all about, right? People accept each other's differences and their choices and it's just, it's, it's really a wonderful thing. So, so I have a frog in my throat and it's driving me crazy, so I apologize. So as you know, integrating the social and emotional and academic needs of students is vital to their success. So we are really fortunate and you are fortunate to have your children in Bolton Public Schools because we have so many really truly wonderful supports in place already from preschool up to our kids in the transition program to meet those social and emotional needs. We have a lot of interventions that we're going to talk about. We have a lot of support staff and we have our teachers and our parents and, and all of the staff in the buildings on a daily basis for every single moment, supporting the social, emotional needs of kids, right? Social, emotional learning is not just a lesson that we teach or it's not just a one-time kind of activity. It's embedded in everything that we do. So our teachers have really embraced that kind of learning. And I think both schools have created a climate where kids feel safe to take that kind of learning. And I think the both schools have created a climate where kids feel safe to take risks and feel safe to talk to us about things that are going on. The kids in Bolton are really lucky because it is a small district and teachers and staff really know the kids. You know, kids don't get, they don't get missed or they don't get passed because we know them. Teachers have good relationships with kids. Teachers and parents are the eyes and the ears in the school and they hear things that might be going on with the student or maybe a concern that comes up and they pass that along to either an administrator or to one of the school counseling staff members. So you know, there's a group of people who are really watching out for kids on a, on a regular basis, like daily basis. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, I'm going to introduce two of my staff members who are with me. I'm very pleased to introduce Todd Gian Santi, School Counselor at Bolton High School. He'll be presenting with us. And Phil Maderos, School Psychologist at Bolton Center School is the other person who'll be talking about the supports that we have in place. So this next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about, it talks about what our support staff is, consists of. And this is just the counseling staff. This isn't special and teachers or the other related staff members. These are the people who really look at the social emotional well-being and the mental health kinds of issues. So currently in our district, we have 2.8 school psychologists. We have two full-time at the center school and 0.8 at the high school, although that is shifting a little bit more because of some staffing. We have two school counselors and we have a school social worker. So we have a lot of support staff for meeting the social emotional needs of our kids. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Gian Santi and Mr. Maderos to go on with the next slides. So Jess, thanks.
Thank you. Our practice of school psychology is very aligned with best practices outlined by the National Association of School Psychologists. Our main areas of practice include assessment of potential disability. That includes cognitive testing, rating scales to gather information across people and places, and observation of potential environmental factors. So that we can integrate this and other evaluators' information with day-to-day performance. This allows the team to understand all the factors influencing students' ability to learn. Counseling and social skills in schools is focused on what students need to be successful academically, emotionally, behaviorally, and socially. Therefore, we focus on development of specific skills such as self-advocacy or making friends. We're always looking to develop students who can eventually apply these skills independently. Lastly, school psychologists consult with and develop emotional behavioral support practices that are evidence-based within a three-tiered system from tier one or school-wide and classroom management practices to tier two or targeted supports. And lastly, tier three or an individualized level of support. Next slide, please. Some of the other things that our school psychologists do. We teach a well-established and comprehensive curriculum called Second Step to Middle School Students. There'll be more about that in a later slide. We respond to crises, whether in the larger community or just a moment in a classroom to meet immediate needs such as safety or de-escalation and longer-term needs. We receive referrals when anyone is concerned that students may be at risk of suicidal ideation, whether in statements, notes, or even social media, so that we can assess the risk and provide the appropriate level of support. We consult with classroom teachers on supporting whole class needs. And whenever possible, we use students as role model peers in this learning. Students learn by doing more than listening and they learn more of the school's social emotional culture from what their peers do than what adults say. Next slide, please.
So you'll see some overlap between all the different roles of counselors. The school social worker primary role and it's really to provide that information and resources to students, staff, and parents. Also, you'll see that they counsel students with needs that impact their learning, addressing relevant issues in school, including school attendance and social adjustment, adjustment issues. And often serve as a liaison between students, their families, and community-based supports. Next slide, please. Some of the supports for social emotional learning, as Phil had said as well, teaching a tier-one universal social emotional learning curriculum, the Second Step programs for middle school students. Also, and I think that's one thing we do really well, I think we have a very coherent team, the crisis intervention. You know, serving, serving on that, we all serve on that team and support that. Also conducting risk assessments and providing teachers with tier-one strategies to address needs in the classroom. Some of those examples would be a break card or practicing deep breathing and mindfulness. Also, you know, our school social workers are running groups and involving model peers for counseling and social skills instruction. The next slide, please. So school counselors also serve as a first line of defense in addressing students' social emotional needs that may become barriers to academic success. Promoting a positive environment that enhances students' ability to properly manage social demands of their lives. This is accomplished through direct services such as classroom curriculum and individual counseling as well as indirect services, which is examples would be collaborating with staff, families, and the community. Next slide, please. Some of the supports for social emotional learning, I'd have to say that flexibility is the key in supporting our students. Counselors welcome our students, making themselves available to address their various needs, helping students and families feel more comfortable when more serious issues come into play. We provide counseling to students who may come to school after a loss to process feelings of uncertainty, anxiety, or issues that may seem less pressing to some, but concerning for that student. We strive to ensure that students, families, and staff are validated and listened to while walking them through a difficult time and offering support and resources as appropriate. Next steps may consist of conflict resolution to working with families to access community supports. We often think and work creatively to ensure that students are able to access classes when it's necessary for a student to attend a program outside of school, such as a partial hospital program or a PHP program. And one of the last things on the slider, home visits, which may be conducted to reach students and families that have been unsuccessful in attending school or, or those meetings. Next slide, please. Not only do our Student Support Service staff conduct classroom lessons, but our teachers provide opportunities for social emotional competence. Our teachers serve as partners with support staff in implementing curriculum and then embed learning topics and vocabulary within their classrooms. Teachers model appropriate and respectful behavior during group and classroom discussions. They create a safe and nurturing environment where students' opinions are respected. Teachers know their students. They know them well enough to consult with support staff often upon, before delivering a sensitive lesson or topic. And they, and they ask and know when to not to cold call a student. As Director Gold Snyder had said earlier, teachers and students are often our eyes and our ears. And these systematic supports foster caring and responsive school environment. Next slide, please.
Okay, so we talked to teachers to see what some of the things are that they do in their classrooms and throughout grade levels. And this is a really fun one for me because I would talk preschool and early childhood for years. So it's exciting for me to see these things carried over in a classroom. So some of the ways that we see social emotional learning addressed with the younger kids is teaching kids how to deal with their strong emotions in the classroom in the heat of the moment. We teach the kids as little as three and four-year-olds how to do belly breathing, how to count to 10 or maybe five if they're three. Do some yoga exercises, taking some space if they need to. We also teach cooperation and sharing. We're teaching strategies right in the moment. So we, you know, those teachable moments about, you know, when the kids are tussling and pulling over a toy, how we take turns and, you know, and, and work on those sharing things. We also use literature to pre-teach what to do in certain scenarios. We may use social stories for some kids who maybe can't read a book, but maybe a social story works for them. We also work on teaching children how to appropriately ask others to join and play or how to politely decline if they don't want to play with that particular group of children or with that game. We provide classroom space for kids to take a break if they need to. Sometimes it's just, why don't you go over on the bouncy chair or some teachers may have like a chill corner or, you know, a little area for the kids to go into if they need to kind of regroup and have a moment to pull themselves together. We also teach young children how to recognize others and their own emotions in response to some situations. So, you know, how to respond to something that's really exciting, how to deal with that and not get overly excited. And also how to deal with things that make them sad. So we really teach them how to, you know, what emotions they're feeling and how to handle them and deal with them. We also are working with kids to recognize differences, disabilities and abilities, and how to engage and play with diverse peers and really always validating a child's feelings. Doesn't matter what the feeling is that child is feeling it. And then working together to solve the problem or resolve the issue that the child's having with that particular feeling if they are. Next slide, please.
At Bolton Center School, our elementary teachers implement the Second Step curriculum to maximize integration of the lessons throughout the day. These lessons include topics like empathy, emotional self-awareness and regulation, and social problem solving for issues like exclusion and peer pressure. In the middle school, the Second Step curriculum is taught by psychologists, social worker, and school counselors. These lessons refresh and build on earlier lessons with topics including respectful disagreement and compromise, perspective-taking, substance abuse prevention, and preventing and responding to bullying and cyberbullying. The Zones of Regulation is an easy-to-use system and curriculum we use that categorizes emotions into energy levels. For example, the emotion sad may be in the blue zone resulting in low energy. Or the emotion feeling silly may be in the yellow zone resulting in high energy. The system then allows for students to develop a toolbox of strategies based on what they need to do with their energy level. PBIS refers to a broad set of practices that are how we teach good behavior to our students. The most recognizable aspects to most are bark tickets. These are a way to recognize and reward good behavior and shift focus away from attending negatively to negative behavior. I had mentioned earlier tiered supports, sometimes known as SRBI. The structure is based on allocating resources to need, first with effective school-wide practices that serve the strong majority of our students to tier-two or targeted practices that are focused on a specific area of need. For example, staying focused to complete work. What do we do for these students? And then finally, at a tier-three or individualized level, what do we do for this student for whom those steps have not worked? We also widely use check-in, checkout practices. Frequently, these involve emotional check-ins, including Zones of Regulation check-ins. These are when we review expectations and anticipate challenges that may arise across a day. This is when we review strategies to meet those challenges and review contingencies. For example, if I use my strategy, this is what will happen. At checkout, we often take advantage of that time to look back at the day in a non-confrontational way of giving feedback. For example, I might look at it and say, it looks like you did great in math. What did you do that was so successful? Or it looks like you had a harder time in reading. What was challenging there? And were you able to use the strategies we talked about this morning? These check-in, checkout systems are also often tied to reward systems as we move kids from extrinsic and tangible motivators to the intrinsic motivation of their own successes. Next slide, please.
So some examples of school-wide supports at Bolton High School would be, you know, our personal goal-setting instruction on managing frustration and collaborative student scheduling. We're always making sure that our students are involved in the scheduling process and a decision-making process. Connections is another example. It's a regularly scheduled time for students to work with their teachers on various academic tasks. Teachers and students were purposely scheduled together to support both academic and social emotional needs. The implementation of a freshman cohort program supports grade-nine students' transition to high school by utilizing a common schedule with teachers for increased access for support, transition, and various team-building activities. Another item to reference would be the Bigs and Littles Program, which is a student-led program that pairs volunteers or upperclassmen with incoming students by interest and they utilize survey data. Students actually create the survey and collect that data to, to make those pairs. The Bigs facilitate new student orientation. They do student tours. They foster or facilitate question-answer sessions and organize various activities. Activities are supported by the school community. For instance, one of the activities was an art project that was planned and prepped by our art students and our art club participants, which further provided opportunities for socialization mentoring. Next slide, please. And supports for staff. So supports for staff are accomplished in many ways as identified in this slide. I'd say most importantly to note is the ongoing communication, collaboration, and flexibility practiced and supported by staff and administration. From the beginning stages of planning for learning to a return-to-school schedule, administration solicited ongoing feedback to ensure that staff are well-supported. Flexibility, once again, both of administration and staff was essential when classes had to be covered in order to support our colleagues when their own children or family became ill. Listening and responding to staff needs, especially when struggling with social distancing. So another example there is conducting outside staff meetings on, on a warm day when we weren't quite ready to gather as a school community indoors. So those are some of the examples that I'd like to reference as regarding support.
Phil, you're muted.
Thank you.
Jess, can you put that one slide, please? Sorry.
Of support and learning are the same whether we're talking about students or staff. So peer-to-peer support and teaching is critical. And we provide a structured time for that support in staff, again, for some of the same reasons of that non-confrontational, peer-to-peer, empathetic, and analytical critical feedback that can be so helpful. We include simple, low-demand and fun challenges to promote wellness with associated prizes that go with participation for those. And lastly, recognition and gratitude. Whether it's the simple thank yous in words or cards, whether it's the small gifts or whether it's events like the popular tree cart that comes around with baked goods. Teachers are mostly motivated by their love of the kids and teaching. And more than anything, they want to know that people can see and understand that the work they're doing is their calling and that they're doing their best. So that is critically important one. Next slide.
Thank you, Phil and Todd. I really appreciate everything that you've done for this presentation. And talk about support for staff yesterday when we had an early dismissal and I was kind of freaking out because we hadn't finalized the presentation. Todd and Phil stayed after work, got out almost two hours and stayed with me till 2:00 yesterday afternoon in the snowstorm, working on the final touches. So I'm very grateful and appreciative. So thank you. I hope that everybody learned a few things and there's so many more supports for emotional, social emotional learning for kids that we couldn't even capture everything. But we can open up, if it's okay with Superintendent Hack, we can open up if there are questions.
Absolutely. If anybody has questions or comments, I would just like to say thank you very much to Beth, to Todd, and to Phil. It was an outstanding presentation and really you guys did a fabulous job and greatly appreciate all you did putting it together, including yesterday afternoon. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments from board members? I do. Ria. Have there been a noticeable increase in the number of episodes of students needing help based on, you know, the, this period of the pandemic that you've noticed? Because obviously it's, it's been an issue around the country. So how are we doing in Bolton? Because obviously, it's been an issue around the country. So how are we doing in Bolton?
So Todd or Phil, do you want to speak from your perspective and then I can kind of speak about it? Phil?
Sure. What I see is not what we began planning for in the spring of 2020. The kids have been remarkably resilient, remarkably good with all of the practices. I guess what I see now, and these are difficult connections to make because community behavior is so complex. But after a long period of working so hard, you know, things, things build up. I wouldn't say that there's any dramatic increase in behavior referrals. But I think that, you know, our kids have sort of been a long time coming to get out of some of the more restrictive things, to be able to play in a structured way at recess and get back to a natural way of doing things that really supports their ability to be resilient and get along.
Yeah, I would agree, Phil. And I think also, I think we've gotten so much better at embedding social-emotional learning and supporting kids throughout the day that I think that we're able to deal with those things before it gets to a crisis level. So I think when we see things kind of coming up, you know, stirring up a little bit in a classroom or with a particular student, again, staff may let us know because the staff, really the eyes and the ears for us. So we catch things early and kind of nip it in the bud and deal with it really before it gets to that, that critical point. So I think that maybe through the pandemic, we've, we've had a a little bit more focus on social-emotional learning because it's been such a hot topic. But I think we've always done it well, but I think we've, we've kind of fine-tuned our practice a little bit. Todd, you had, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I would say the same. It's, it's hard for me to really paint that broad brush. I think we, you know, we meet students where they are individually. I don't know if any, any of the issues that we work through necessarily may have still been there if, if there wasn't a COVID. So I think, um, you know, that's another good thing. I think we were able to catch things very early. So, and I don't see, you know, knock on wood, I don't see us doing any more or any less. You know, but some examples are, you know, like students are very social, right? So, so they definitely communicated when they were able to see their friends on a, on a full schedule was a big help. Then we see patterns of post-secondary planning where students in the years trying to get motivated to attend a college that they can't yet go and see. Those are a lot of the issues that we were trying to work through and create opportunities for them to stay motivated and see this through, you know, for those better days. So I think those are some of the examples that we work through.
It sounds, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, it just sounds like you've been very proactive while along. So what I'm hearing is a lot of proactive action, you know, initiatives. I had one more question. So how, so how does the social worker work? Does the social worker go to both schools?
Yes. Yep. He is split between the two schools. He has two days at one school and three days at one school right now. And that could change based on needs and numbers. It could change maybe next year, but that's how we started this year. We are really very fortunate with the, the number of support staff we have. So we just thought that the social worker would be best suited at both schools. So both staff, both sets of staff can work with him and, you know, he can oversee kids in both schools as well. So that's, it's a split position right now. And Ria, just to your point earlier about being proactive, I think just to pat really Bolton on our, on our back, many of these things and most of these things were in place well before the pandemic, right? So we've been doing social skills curriculum. We've been doing zones. All of those things were in place. And most of the things that, that I talked about for early childhood or that Phil and Todd talked about is being in place at both schools, they've been in place for a long time. You know, we have fine-tuned them and maybe tweaked them and we were always looking at ways to improve our systems and our practices. But none of them really came to be because of the pandemic. I mean, these are things longstanding interventions that we've had in place.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for the great job you've been doing.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Thank you again, everybody, very much. It was a great presentation. Appreciate it very much. Feel free to stay, but feel free to go.
All right. So thank you very much. That was very informative and hopefully we continue to be proactive and keep that in a good place. I don't believe we have any unfinished business this evening. So on to new business and resignations.
Thank you. I'd like to inform the board this evening that Bolton High School math teacher Pete Turgen sadly is going to be leaving us and we wish him well in his next endeavor and thank him for his many years of dedicated, dedicated service to the Bolton Public Schools and Bolton High School. We also have a resignation from BHS Special Education Teacher Chris Driscoll and BHS English Teacher Caitlin Moriarty, and we wish them well in their endeavors. And we also have a resignation from a daily substitute at BCS Chelsea Dino. That is it this evening for resignations.
Thank you. Now we are on to a couple of new courses. The first one is writing, composition, style, and technique.
Yes, thank you. Well, we are hoping to, we're looking to move forward for approval, a new course. This would be a one semester elective. I'm just want to make sure that all board members receive for their packet, a short overview. It looked like a chart. That, I'm seeing some head nodding. So great. Thanks. Just want to make sure because that has the very brief overview that you could have read in preparation for this evening. Mr. Dennis is with us this evening and I want to thank him for his hard work. And he is the academic leader in, at Bolton High School for English. And we are always looking for new electives and new ways to support our learners at the high school. And the writing, composition, and technique has been a course we've talked about for a few years in, in bringing forward. And we feel that this is a perfect, perfect time to be doing this in that this course is designed for all students. From students who really want to develop skills because it may not be their strongest area to students who are already strong in writing. And it is designed to be in a workshop model so that the structure is already differentiated for the variety of learners in really preparing all students for a post-secondary writing experience. This is a new course that would have a, for this year, a zero budget impact because it would be focused primarily on a variety of resources that the teacher would gather to help the students who are in their class based on interests and the focus of the time. It is, it stays contemporary with the resources as needed. Colin, is there anything else you'd like to add about this course?
No, I think that that's pretty much it. It's designed to help improve students' writing skills across the board. That's really what we were looking for. We saw the opportunity for that. That many students reached out and said they wanted to get better at writing beyond what is embedded within the curriculum. So we wrote this course with that in mind as an opportunity for those students.
Doesn't anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Now we are looking for a motion to approve the new course, Writing, Composition, Style, and Technique.
So move. So Chris.
A second, Ria.
Thank you, Chris and Ria. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I just want to thank Mr. Dennis and Ms. Malinowski for working on being able to offer this course. I think it's a great addition for our high school students. And I really appreciate that it's a course that will hopefully appeal to, you know, both kids who need a little extra help with their writing and those who really enjoy writing and want to take it to the next level. I think that there's a lot of flexibility with what can be done through the course. So I'm, I'm excited to see it offered.
Is this just all purely additive to the course selection? Or are there, does every, do courses also be removed to make room for courses such as this?
But we have electives in the junior and senior year. And so it would be based on, it would be added and then you would, we would make the decisions based on what students are selecting.
Okay.
For that.
All right.
Great question. Thank you, Scott.
Are there any other questions or comments? I would say that this sounds like a good course to me and I love the zero budgetary impact aspect of it. And if there's nothing else, then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone who's opposed or abstaining? Okay, we have one new course. How about AP English Language and Composition?
So moving hand in hand, AP Language and Composition really would be that next level. This is a college-level course of very much what the writing, composition, style, technique is. We already offer the AP literature and this would complete the English AP offerings by offering the AP Lang. It is also an AP course that we are able to offer at 11th grade for students who may be interested, which also opens up some areas that we haven't been able to in, with some other courses. So very similar course. Again, there is no desire. So AP always has textbooks that they have on their list. But the teacher who's gone through the training sees no need for purchasing this, that textbook that would go along with this feels that we have all resources in place to be able to teach it. AP certainly did an amazing, our college board really all the way around. We heard about SAT coming online. College Board has really pivoted to be an online resource. So there are many more online resources than ever before, including the assessments that kids can take along the way and teachers can, can access at various points. So it's way, it's much more robust, especially for a writing course. Which is a little different from some of the other AP courses we've brought forward. So this one is also a zero-budget impact. Colin, again, anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to add, adding AP Lang really provides the opportunity for those students who aren't highly motivated readers to still get an AP English credit. And that, that's really the biggest reason why we're adding it is not just for improving the writing, but to access all of those learners. Because not everybody, not everybody wants to really invest in the close reading that AP Lit requires because they're more of a writing kind of student, but they still want to be able to get some AP credit for English in high school. And this just allows us to cover those learners as well.
Okay, so now I'm looking for a motion to approve a new course, AP English Language and Composition.
So move to Ria.
Second.
Thank you, Ria and Scott. Do we have any questions or comments about this new course?
If you want to. I would just like to really thank the curriculum subcommittee for spending and Colin spending some really solid time with us in, over looking at these courses before we prepared for this evening. Support is always welcomed and greatly appreciated. So thank you for all, all the members, Chris, Ria, and Sue for, for your time in supporting this.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions or comments or discussion? I would just like to say that I am very, very supportive of all AP classes. We have added several of them in the last few years. And I think it is excellent opportunity for students, also attractive to those from other towns that we have been trying to attract. And again, love the AP No Budget Impact course that we're offering. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 That was everybody's, are you opposed? Or abstaining? All right, we have two new courses. That is excellent. And our last piece of new business is the Town of Bolton Diversity Study. It was asked by Ria on behalf of the Diversity Committee that we have in town to put this item on the agenda. So Ria, would you like to tell us what we are looking at?
Thank you. I just want to say that there are three members of the Diversity Committee with us tonight. Amanda Gordon, our chairperson, is the commission, Kaywan Gordon, and Anne Decker. They came, they're, they're at this meeting with us. I just want, I am a member also of the Bolton Diversity Commission and we, Amanda Gordon presented to the Board of Selectmen on behalf the Diversity Survey. And they, I don't want to read this to you, so I'm just going to kind of summarize it. They approved the distribution of this survey to assess the strengths and opportunities around diversity, equity, and inclusion in the town of Bolton. So that's basically the goal. The Board of Selectmen supports this. So the, the survey is targeted to members of the community and school-aged youth in grade seven through 12 and transition. The survey collects demographic information from respondents, but does not require submission of any identifying information. So it is anonymous and we will analyze the responses of aggregate data only and that will be shared with the stakeholders without any identifying information. The Board of Selectmen is requesting that the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools facilitate the distribution of the survey electronically to the Bolton Public School students in grade seven through 12 and the Transition Program. And hard copy surveys will also be available by request. I have been working with Dr., I mean Superintendent Heck, on the email and survey distribution that will go home via school messenger. And and we'd like it to be completed by Friday, April 1st. We're hoping that this is completed and we are ready to have a report by, by mid-March, May, the latest. I'm sorry, we want it ready by July or August. And then we will present our report to the Board of Selectmen. Are there any questions? So, so I just, go ahead.
I have a question for Kristen. Were there any concerns from the administration's side on sharing the survey with students?
So I did have some conversations with both Ria and Anne. They did share a draft of the survey and I had some questions or comments about it just because I wasn't sure about a couple of the questions and they, they did some revisions, which was great. You know, kids can choose to participate or not. And because there's no identifiable information, you know, I think it's good information that they're trying to glean, you know, from the survey. So hopefully, you know, we have a good population of students who will complete it. It is going to go home to parents. And Ria and I did have a conversation about that, you know, is this something we're going to ask kids to do? You want us to ask kids to do in school or go home? And what Ria had shared was, I think the, the commission had thought that it was just better served to go home. And then, you know, parents could, at least if they wanted to see it with their kids and make a decision or not, you know, whether or not they wanted their kids to, to fill out the survey.
So how will it then be distributed? Will you send an email to parents or? So how will it then be distributed? Will you send an email to parents or to parents and students?
It's going to be a school messenger, and we do have students, believe it or not, that are signed up for that as well. And so, and ask that parents share it with, you know, their child who's of the appropriate age for the survey, should they, you know, so choose to do so and ask them to complete it.
Chris, the school district is just helping us to distribute and get the survey completed. But they really don't have, this is from the commission, the Diversity Commission, not the school district. So we just wanted to make, you know, have that separation.
I have no question specifically, just a comment that I am happy that we are able to use our network to distribute information on behalf of the town, and this is a noble study. And hopefully, it will provide us with some useful information.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Do we have any future business?
No, we do not. Just a reminder, Board of Finance meeting next Thursday night, 7:15, where the board will present its budget. Hope to see y'all there.
With that said, we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott and Ria. Is there any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? I believe that was everyone in favor. So we are now adjourned, and thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.